We'll call the order of January 20th meeting in the city council, stand for the pledge.
I'd like to make this to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I need motion and second for the agenda. I'll make some motion. Dave, where you? Need a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion, any changes? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Agenda carries five to zero. You're on to consent, need a motion and a second. Motion? Second. Discussion.
I have a couple things.
Go ahead.
Um, in the minutes, on, uh, under R, we had a resolution for official designations and appointments. I was assigned assistant lead inspector for metro cities, I don't even know what that is.
I'll do my paperwork if you want me to actually check that out. I guess you're probably the alternate for something for?
That was the alternate for, I think, the Northwest Metro, the Metro Mayor's Association?
Mayor's Association, or maybe the League of Municipal Districts, if that's what it is.
That was a different line.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that was.
I will check and see what that is and see.
I think.
I have the notes and stuff on my, let me check on that. If it is something, I will just follow up and you know what it is.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I'll just keep going. And, uh, in the payment of claims, we have a bill from Archival, Archive Social Incorporated, Incorporated, social media archiving. Is that what it sounds like?
Um, Archive Social, I believe, and I'm gonna maybe look, hopefully tomorrow, maybe it's something maybe Kelsey does for social media stuff.
This is the backup for any data practices request.
Sorry.
I believe it's the backup of Facebook and any stuff that we have, so if a data request comes out, they have, they have the information.
All right, um, keep going here, on page twenty-three, home security abstract and title for five hundred ninety-four thousand.
That would be the purchase, it finally got put on the payment of claims, it's the purchase of the property down on One Hundred Seventy Avenue, so you already approved that purchase.
Okay.
It's the same dollar amount, it just, because it was a wire, it wasn't put in the payment, or it wasn't put through the system, and now we put it through the system when we do the December bankroll, and that now puts on the payment of claims, it's gotta be approved, so.
Sure.
You've already approved it technically, but.
Yeah, oh, good, um, I just wasn't sure if this one was, uh, the one in the old village.
It is not.
That the EDA has been working on.
No, that one is, should be on there as well, it should be roughly a hundred and fifty-two thousand maybe? That's related to the one up on the Storm Village that the EDA was doing.
Okay, and then one other on page twenty-eight, Opus Development for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
You haven't referred to Jason Quisbert, that's related to stormwater ponding on the other side of, when we didn't put the, we're gonna call it the.
Yeah, there was supposed to be some improvements completed with the interchange to accommodate some stormwater from the site, those improvements were not included with the project, so they had to later be constructed by Opus, but they weren't responsible too, because it was part of a prior negotiation with the landowner, so they constructed them on behalf of the city, and the city paid.
Okay, so they did the work and worked.
They did the work for the city.
Yep. Was that the, the undersized pipe business?
Yeah, there was, yeah, it was undersized to be able to convey the stormwater off the Opus site, and that was based on when we were doing the Dayton Parkway, we had exchanged an agreement, um, and the oversized pipe never got put in during the Parkway work, and this was discussed when the DA was put in, and it was, it mentioned that we give them credit a hundred percent for the stormwater ponding, they did all the work, I think it was like three hundred and fifty thousand, we got credited back the hundred and seventy thousand, 'cause that's on the DA related to credits, and then we paid the difference.
Was that just kinda effectively taken out of the temp then, or?
It's taken out of the Stormwater Fund.
Oh, okay, I guess it is.
Yep. It would normally have been paid, so it's not really a difference, 'cause it normally would have been paid on the Stormwater Fund when we did the Dayton Parkway project.
Yeah.
Okay, that's zero.
All right, um, that's all I had.
Anybody else? Okay, we got a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Consent passed five to zero. Open forum, is anybody here for open forum? Come on forward. Limited to three minutes for non-agenda items, state your name and address, no council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff.
Marsha Grover, one-one-three-two-oh-Fernbrook Lane, I'm here again to talk to you about the gas station convenience store that's gonna go in the DCM development, Dean's Country Manor neighborhood, where all the existing houses have wells. Remember that there are already four, soon to be seven, gas stations within a two-to-five mile radius of this location. At our recent city council meeting, there was a presenter that said they were also planning another gas station convenience store on I-94, which will make seven. Currently selling groceries is the one by the elementary school, the one by Target, the one at the trailer park, and, um, Kisha's on One Hundred Thirteenth only sells gas, but that makes four people selling gas. Three more in the works. Why would you think that the south end of town needs seven gas station convenience stores? Or even five? All but one south of One Hundred Seventeenth. And consider the things that happen around a gas station. The traffic will be ridiculous, children will ride their bikes on Fernbrook Lane to go spend their money and hang out, I know this because I did that myself as a child, only we didn't have bumper-to-bumper traffic on a two-lane road with speed limits of fifty-five miles an hour. Every time it rains or snows, the water will wash the spilled chemicals into the groundwater and into the neighboring wells. There's no plan for any sewer hookups or water hookups there. The noise from the cars and the lights will be glaring into people's homes twenty-four-seven, there'll be trash all over, the noise from a car wash and pollution will be happening twenty-four-seven. Have you ever taken your car through a car wash? Next time, pay attention to the noise and where all the water goes. Then imagine that next to your house running twenty-four-seven, and Mr. Dean wants to put a gas station right next to a holding pond where all the pollution is gonna sink right into the ground and into people's drinking water. Most of the people living on Fernbrook have been there a long, long time, they paid their taxes for a long, long time, and they deserve some consideration in this project. Does the city have an obligation to keep its citizen self? Yes, they do. What else do they have? They have rules and regulations, they have a police department, they have a fire department. Also, I've contacted the pollution control agency and the state board of health, they advised me there's very stringent rules about building gas stations next door to people with private wells, and if you think that five, soon to be seven, gas stations slash convenience stores is just not enough for this end of the city, as well as having the Target, and that this city just has to have at least one more, and let's place it right next door to homes where the citizens get their drinking water from the groundwater, then you have to follow those rules exactly, nothing less, and I'll be right there to make sure that Mr. Dean, the gas station owner, and you, the city, especially, follow those rules. All of you will be held responsible, since you all played a part in the pollution, have you heard about, um, the situation out in White Bear Lake with the water gremlin and the pollution, the people adjacent to that property getting cancer? There's lawsuits going like crazy. Bears is not an isolated case, and we don't want this to be one of our cases. And what about our property values? Maybe our neighbors should pool the money and buy the property next to yours and do the same thing to you, especially since, if this, if this is approved, then you're throwing the comp plan right out the window, and it doesn't mean anything to you. Oh, and by the way, ever since the houses went up south of Dean's Manor and over on One Hundred Seventeenth, the neighborhood's been inundated with water problems. Maybe this problem and also the traffic problems current, currently happening should be addressed before any more houses go up. And speaking of traffic problems, need I remind you that the mail is another ball of wax, many of us are senior citizens living on Fernbrook, we've been there a long time, and we have to cross One Twenty-One several times a day to get our mail. The mail delivery in this area is so erratic that we really do have to cross Fernbrook several times a day to see if it's been delivered. Some days, the post office doesn't even deliver to us, some days it's not there until eight-thirty at night. So, of course, we do not know when it'll come, so we have to keep going out there and looking. Someday, one of us is gonna get killed. Many issues need to be addressed before you approve this plan. Don't let the developers do all the work and you just sit back and roll with it, start planning positive things for the city and for the people who already live here, many in my neighborhood for thirty to fifty or more years, fifty-two for us. Do your job and let's really live the difference. And I would like to draw your attention to the bottom of the agenda here, where it says, "One of the, part of the mission of the city is to provide residents with a safe and pleasant place to live while preserving our rural character." So.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
I haven't been here for a while, so. My name is Kathy Powers, and I live on one-one-four-six-one Fernbrook Lane, and I'm really here to talk about the letter that I just received about the EAW for the DCM farms, and, you know, I am totally against making a portion of that farm commercial or retail. I, I just don't understand how we can do such a thing. I know he's got a roundabout there, and I know his plans are to do something there, but it doesn't spell out what he's gonna do on that commercial property. It just says that he's, it's gonna be commercial or retail. Now, I am not gonna reiterate what Marcia has gone through or anything like that, because I think she's, it was well spoken. But I think, again, here, we're taking the cart before the horse. We haven't dealt with the traffic on Fernbrook, and I know I've been working with Tracy, who did the, um, champion, uh, Champlin four-way stop there, and Stacy is, or Stacy Sarah has also said that she would help out in that. And we've gone to Hennepin County, and the first time, they turned us down because we asked for a four-way stop by the church, because that's not only traffic, but it's pedestrian. There is no pedestrian sign, nothing there. There are people from Sundance that take their children in strollers and just walk across, because there is a platform there for them to walk across to go over to the park, and, um, that, it needs to be dealt with, somebody's gonna get killed, and I don't want that to happen. So, um, the other thing is, on the retail side, Mr. Dean has said that he wants to put in about two-hundred-and-sixty residential properties there. Now, if you multiply that by two, you get close to five-hundred or over five-hundred more cars that are going to be on Fernbrook Lane, because that's where they're gonna go, they're gonna go to the hospital, or, you know, they're gonna go to work. And also, if you put in a commercial, retail, how many more cars are you gonna have there? I think it would be absurd for anybody on the council here to approve any kind of commercial or retail property there. I mean, I don't like the idea of the retail either, but I have kinda said to myself, well, it's going to be what it's going to be, and I can't do much about some of that stuff. We moved here about fifty years ago and loved the atmosphere of the rural, um, community and the outlook, and it still indicates that you want this to be a rural atmosphere. And putting more homes, putting retail, more commercial and retail in is not going to be anything that looks rural. And I just plead with you guys to think about what we're really doing here, and if it means stopping the whole Doggone Project, I guess that's what it means, stopping the whole project. Let's see, I do also understand that there are still water issues on the Lee Hawquist property, and I know that you have been out and looked to see that, and we still have issues with that, we haven't dealt with that as, as the city, we haven't dealt with that. And then to say you're gonna let more building happen, this doesn't make sense to me. So, anyway, I won't go on anymore, I think I've said enough.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Lee Hawquist, I live at one-one-four-seven-one Fernbrook Lane, uh, and I'm here to talk about, it's the end of January, and I'm still sump pumping water. I'm pumping more water than I'm using, so it can't, I don't believe it could be an internal leak. This started with the development about the time the Braeburn project started, or the Lee, I keep calling it the Lee property, 'cause that's what I was told it was, but, but, you know, something started when that happened. I never would pump water year-round like we do the last couple of years, I pumped water when we had a drought a year ago. This water's coming from someplace that isn't my property. I feel the city is actually, they approved the plan, I think they've got, got some skin in the game here to fix it. Basically, we're diverting water. A lot of this started, all the wetlands that used to be along One Seventeenth are gone, and I think it's 'cause you, you got rid of the wetlands and just put a couple holding ponds in there, and everything I've read says holding ponds are not the same as wetlands, as far as their function. It's part of an ecosystem, you should be working with nature rather than against it. You know, I, I don't, I can't tell you how disgusted I am, 'cause I can't, just can't tell you. But I've noticed that if you, if you drive around the west side of Champlin, where they have a development, they kept the wetlands, they don't have holding ponds in there in their developments, they've got wetlands all around it, and so they have less houses, the houses have to be further away because of the land and stuff like that, but maybe we don't need to sell every square inch of it for taxable purposes. Oh. And I don't know if the DNR needs to be involved in this or what, with the wetland protection, but, but pulling out a wetland to put in a holding pond isn't the same thing. I don't think the city, and I don't think the planning commission did their due diligence about two and a half years ago when they approved the first project, I think you had an obligation then to find out about it. I raised the water drainage as an issue, the developer raised the water drainage as an issue. I, I think you had an obligation to do something, uh, I don't think you did your due diligence then, and I hope to heck you do it now. My fear is, once Tom starts with this project, his, once he starts working out there, it's just simply gonna overwhelm my septic, or my sump system. I mean, I'm pumping, when it's warm out and it rains, I'm pumping so much water as it is, I don't think my pump will keep up, and I, and I'm pumping seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons an hour. Um, even right now, like I say, we're pumping more water than we're using. I think the city has a responsibility here, and I hope I made my point. Like I say, I think you guys got skin in the game, you approved it, the planning commission approved it, the developer told you what he's gonna do, and you went along with it, and that was it, so, my feelings, I'm, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Keith Grover, one-one-three-two-oh-Fernbrook Lane, there's a few things I wanna discuss tonight, and I think probably at least at one time or another, I've discussed them with all of you, but, um, I think we, we just need to keep bringing these things forward, so that you guys understand how we feel about it. The development that's going on in the southern end of Dayton, specifically the stuff by, by Sundance, 'cause that's what directly affects us, the traffic and the, uh, the water runoff, um, the water that's running off from the existing development there comes across and it goes under One Twenty-One, and then it crosses under One Hundred and Twelve, and it goes behind the McDalen property, and then it goes into the small creek that's behind all of our houses that are along the road there. That property has never, has never run water continuously, and ever since they put that development in out there, even with the holding ponds, I'm not sure what they do, because I see more water than before the holding ponds were there. But the water that comes across there is unbelievable, last year, when we were in that months or two or three months-long drought, the water never stopped running across there, flooding across, flooding Jesse Young's field, um, which I cut hay on, and, uh, then across Hillary McDalen's backyard, and that's just a constant swamp back there. Guys, it never was like that before, they did something different out there with that water, and there's way more water coming across onto our properties than what there was before, and I think that's what Lee's talking about, he worried about the property that Tom wants to develop behind him. I mean, we didn't do it right on the other one, it still screwed up, and he's pumping water now, even before they even get it going, I understand why he's worried about it, and frankly, I'm kinda worried about it too, 'cause I'm not that far away from him, and I'm downhill from where Lee is. That's one of the things I wanted to bring up. Another thing is, I don't understand, I don't understand why our planning commission and, and sometimes our council, and I'm gonna specifically talk about the planning commission, I don't understand why they're doing monkey flips and backflips to make our ordinances morph around what the developers want. We have a comp plan, we have city ordinances, we have lot sizes that we've all laid out, we've all agreed to, you guys have had, you know, open meetings, you've passed ordinances, they're out there, they're in the comp plan, but yet every time a developer comes in with a plan, specifically like the one that Mr. Dean is bringing forward now, that's along the north side of One Hundred Thirteenth, there's nothing in that thing that I see that, that follows what our comp plan is or what our ordinances are. Why in the world, when they bring those things forward, don't we tell them, here we have ordinances, we have lot sizes we're supposed to follow? Every time they come forward with another plan, they're asking for smaller lot sizes, I know you guys see that, because the first ones he built out, they were fairly decent-sized lots, and then he builds the next addition, and then they ask for smaller lots. Now he wants to, we just got the, the deal in the mail for, you know, for his next layout for back there, and some of those lots, I have a small three-bedroom brambler, it won't fit on those lots, I mean, they're ridiculous, I don't know why we even consider letting them do that. Especially after the, the fire thing that we saw in California, what happens with you, you know, one gets on fire, and then you have a wind, and pretty soon you got a whole row of, and then you got a nightmare for the, for the fire department trying to put that stuff out. But I think we need to pay attention to our ordinances and make the developers actually follow what we've decided the city that we want it to look like, not what they think it should look like, in order to maximize the dollars for them. It's not our job to make sure they make the maximum amount of money off that property, frankly, I don't care. I mean, that's their problem, they chose to build the houses, they chose to do the development, they know what the rules are, we've got them laid out there, they've been out there for, in some cases, for decades, they need to follow them. The traffic control in the, in the sidelines coming into Dayton, I remember when they first did the, the, uh, the development along One Twenty-One, south of Dean's Manor, all the way over to the edge of Dayton where it meets Maple Grove by Rush Creek, they built a buffer zone along One Twenty-One, because the council at the time thought that we don't want people driving into the city, and the first thing they see is just smang houses, banged up all along the road. They built that big buffer zone, those, you know, you notice those homes are way back off the road, along through there, they're back farther than probably two or three, you could probably put two or three homes of the way they wanna cram them in this new development, in that buffer zone. I don't understand why, when we get down, a quarter of a mile down, when we get to One Hundred Thirteenth and wanna go north of there, why they're not considering any buffer zone there at all? I mean, they're cramming, they, they wanna do the commercial up there, which to me is just insane to stick in the middle of a housing project, all the new homes that are coming in there, plus all of us that live on the east side of One Twenty-One that are in, basically in either small lots or fairly small pieces of property, we don't wanna look out our window and see glaring lights from streetlights twenty-four-seven? I mean, it's, it's bad enough that we live on One Twenty-One in the first place, we know that traffic's not gonna get any lighter unless we have a different road, which, that's way off in the future. But I think, I think we're really putting the cart before the horse, like Kathy says. All of these things need to be discussed and need to be planned out, and have some kind of a, a step-by-step to move forward, and we can't just leapfrog over all these things. We need to have, you know, some kind of a buffer zone, like they do on the south side of One Hundred and Thirteen. I mean, that makes it look better, I mean, I don't know that, to a farm kid, none of it looks good, but I understand it's gonna be houses, I'm not that naive. I guess the commercial property is the, is the, is the part that really breaks the camel's back for me, it's right in the middle of all of our homes. We've lived out there in a nice peaceful, live this, live the dream, right, live in Dayton, live in the country. I grew up in Dayton, and my family moved in Dayton in nineteen sixty-two, I grew up over on Elm Creek Road, my daughter and her family still live in the house that I grew up in. My wife and I have been in our house since nineteen seventy-four, and I never in my wildest dreams ever expected us to be looking at the kind of project that Mr. Dean wants to stick across the road from us. I don't think it belongs there, I think it belongs in wherever the city has commercial property, in, in the zone commercial, not in the middle of a housing project, I'm sorry, I took too much of your time, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody online?
Nobody online. Sorry, sorry, we have one person online. If you wanna raise your hand function, uh, to be able to speak, it would be appreciated.
Nothing. Okay. Staff consultant in council updates.
Here members of council, I don't have any updates, I didn't have any.
Sweet.
I have a couple of quick ones, uh, well, for rehab update, um, cracks in the cabinet at the bottom of well have been identified, uh, we're pumping, we will be pumping cement grout to seal off and then, uh, remove the residual sand at the bottom of the well, uh, drop in a, then we'll put a test pump down there, run the test pump until the water is clear of sand, then we'll reinstall our pump, uh, run bacteria tests, then hopefully we'll be able to put it back into service, so we should be back up and running. I don't have an exact timeline on it at the moment, it depends on the weather, we've been held back because of the cold temps. Parks, um, we got six proposals on the L.C. Stevens Park master plan update, um, we are staff working on trimming it down to three candidates for the park commission to interview at the next Tuesdays meeting, to trim that down to two for council presentation and question and answers, and a, and contract award in February. That's all I have.
Does this bid meet the other bid requirements, or these, I mean, I'm a little confused about how they're, how they're gonna whittle it down to three, what?
Uh, so, um, there's three proposals there, and they'll pick the best two out of the three, and so we're doing the same thing, uh, going through what the requirements of the RFP were, if they met those requirements, and then, uh, the, you know, if they're able to meet the requirements through skills base, um, how many offices they got, if they got a local office, those type of things to make it, um, the best proposal going forward.
Okay. Chief?
Good evening, mayor, members of council, uh, last Wednesday, the twenty-twenty-five Northwest Suburban Fire Academy started, we have sixteen students, not specific to Dayton, um, but throughout the surrounding communities, and then, uh, earlier this afternoon, if you had an opportunity, I did share the, uh, twenty-twenty-five revisions that need to take place of the emergency operations plan, there are seventeen annexes contained within that. So, those plan, planning documents, um, between Chief Enga and myself, attending the Northwest Suburban Emergency Planning Group, um, we go through those planned documents, take a look at them, edit them globally for all the north suburb, the north suburban group, and then we have to bring it back to each of the, back to your own community to make it more specific to the city of Dayton, if you will. So, the plan is, over the next ten or eleven months, is to review that, and then, um, if you guys have any questions that relates to anything that's in there, please let me know, and we can, uh, we're gonna move that forward, so the goal is have that complete by the end of the year, and then next year, we would start with, um, tabletop exercises.
Sorry, I forgot something on my update. We have a broom on the CIP for this year, it's a fourteen-thousand-dollar budgeted item, we have been looking at trimming that down to a lesser number, and in the process, we found a used unit that would, uh, work for us. The, the used unit is six thousand dollars, um, it's a year old. Um, it's a year old. It was used by Anoka County for, uh, snow power in, um, on the islands and medians. Um, the piece of equipment didn't work for that purpose because when it tipped off of the, the curb, the broom was at an angle and it kept hitting the, uh, RFP on the front, RFP, the PTO on the front of the tractor. Um, so we won't be using it for that kind of thing. We're going to be using it on flat surfaces like trails and ice rinks, those kinds of things. Um, so it's, uh, a good fit for us. Um, I haven't been able to get, uh, another quote. They're holding this broom for us. I was wondering if I could get the approval to go ahead and purchase that, um, without pulling the, the full staff report together.
I have no problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Make it go.
Okay. Thank you very much.
As long as we keep you under, what, what did we have? Did he have last year like 11 or 12 items in it?
No, just kidding.
Yes. John?
Um, we've had several projects come in, so we, we will have a busy February, March. Maybe April. That's all.
Okay. Nothing here. Amy?
I don't think so.
You're not sure?
I'll have a question afterwards.
After what?
After the meeting. These people keep talking about this Dean's development and we haven't, I haven't seen anything. I don't know, I have no idea what they're talking about.
Okay. Um, Sheriff?
Um, I was wondering if we could talk about having a lighting ordinance in Dayton. After our last city council meeting, when, um, some residents brought up concerns about neighbors with lights all night, uh, 24/7 and, uh, like bright white lights, um, and we don't have a lighting ordinance of any kind to look at, so, um, I thought it might be worth, if other people are interested, I thought it'd be worth, um, thinking about a lighting ordinance.
I don't, don't bother me.
I might be. Only because I'm a recipient of ones.
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can look at it. We'll put that on the agenda or say the docket to look at.
Yes.
Thank you. I have nothing.
Uh, nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
All right. Onto council business, item G.
Uh, just want to let you know, there's no action item with this, uh, to be taken. This is just to share information, um, about city infrastructure projects, um, contracting and change orders, just for information only. Feel free to interrupt me at any time. It's, it's, uh, this is just to kind of share information, so there's, um, some understanding on how we manage through these projects. Um, so my agenda, I'll just go through very quickly on the, the project process, just the steps typically involved with it. Um, the contracting specific to the public bids versus invitational quotes, what those differences are and when we can use those. Um, and then most of the, uh, content will be on contract types and change orders, um, how we, how we do those, uh, with the projects. And then I do have some Dayton project metrics to show just, uh, some of the spending on past projects to, that may or may not be helpful, just how that compares with how the contracts are, are executed. So the typical project, once the improvement is identified or brought to the attention of staff and/or council, um, staff will usually come up with options, identify, or identify options to improve the situation, um, if that's possible and within their, their ability, feasibility of study, whether that's a formal study or just staff or even public works looking at the site, seeing what can be done. At that time, we'll estimate a scope, budget and timeline for the project. These steps will then all be, uh, through council. So the design will be authorized by council and then completed and then the design will be brought back and council will give authorization to go seek contractor bids to complete the work. Once those come back, if they're found favorable, council can choose to award the contract to construct the improvements. Once approved, once constructed and approved and accepted by the city, the project is then closed out. So just a quick, quick run through that. I don't think there's any surprises with it, but just wanted to lay that out. That's kind of the lifespan of the, of the infrastructure projects. So the public bid versus invitational quotes, and I think most are probably familiar with this, that, and this is all statutory, statutory, that's a, that requires this. Public bids have to be accomplished or utilized anytime the project is over $175,000. Um, just noting that the $175,000 is the construction of the project, not the total project cost. So when there is a public bid, the project is advertised in the city's legal publication, which is the newspaper that's identified by the city, and then we also publish in trade, I call them trade publications, there's probably a fancier term for the online database for it. Quest CDN is where we post all of them because the contractors are looking constantly at those, uh, to learn about the projects and then if they choose to, they can submit a bid on those projects. There are some requirements on the bidders being able to bid on the projects, but there is not really any control whatsoever from the city to prevent them directly. So can't pick and choose your bidders. Um, and then the city is required to award the contractor to the lowest responsible bidder. So that, that's not an option and again, that's in state statute. So, uh, I always do have to go with the low. Quote solicitation, this is optional, doesn't have to be utilized, but when the project is expected to be under $175,000, the city does have the right or the ability to solicit directly from contractors. So same thing, project will be put together, but then we will reach out directly to the contractors of our choosing and request that they submit bids on the project. So city has full discretion on who those, those can go to. Um, in this case, the city is not required to award to the low bidder, however, in practice, I think we probably always do. Uh, we're sending them to contractors we prefer and know, so, um, the lowest price is usually what we would accept. Um, and I'll just note, this probably is maybe even obvious, but solicitation is generally more efficient. We don't have to go through the formal publications. Um, the contract documentation can usually be thinned back some because we're going to people that we know instead of having to make sure we're accounting for all of the contractors that might not be, um, as experienced in the work type we're looking for. So the contract types often used or available, um, commonly to these is a, so basically the terms of the contract on how we would, would pay the contractor. So lump sum is probably the most, the easiest to understand, the most straightforward. This is basically you name a price or the contractor names a price and I will do that project for this dollar amount. And that's it. And they get that amount for accomplishing the project. This works really well if it's a very defined project, like build a table. I want a table built lump sum price, makes a lot of sense. The table is either built or it is not. But not always good for projects where we're not sure of how much of each of these things we need. So well-defined scope is, is probably ideal for it. Time and materials is one. Um, if we really don't know what we're getting into, this might be used, but we do try to avoid this, at least for the primary contracting. Um, this is literally the, the contractor will just charge for however long it takes for them to do the job and then they'll have a material cost as well if they have to provide any materials and then there's generally a 10 to 15% markup on those materials as well. Um, this is often used if the, the scope is fuzzy, if we have no idea how long something will take. To be honest, we do use this method quite often in certain types of change orders, just because we don't really know what's going into and instead of having them shut down and charge us for downtime and remobilization, we'll have a move forward on an hourly basis and just work until it's resolved. So the unit comment, unit price contract is, is by far, um, nearly all, I will say, of our projects are done this way. Um, so in this process, and I have an example that will help with this, but the work is divided into work items, like install curb, excavate material, install sod, uh, very straightforward, but units of work with estimated quantities for those. Uh, this will make more sense on, on the next slides. But again, this is, this is good for projects where we know the type of work needed, but we don't necessarily know exactly how much it is. So it allows some flexibility in there, so we're not overpaying or underpaying for the work being done. Because if we're underpaying, we're going to have to have a change order to pay more. So again, the, the work items are identified, um, for the work. So the type of work is identified and this is by the owner in the bid package or the, the documents we put together, uh, together with an estimate, estimated quantity. So it might be linear foot of curb is the unit and we think we need 150 feet of curb. So we'll put 150 feet in there and then the price of that will be left blank. That's what the contractor fills in on the bid. So they'll say, okay, we're going to say $23 per linear foot of curb. So that's how it comes, comes together. So the sum of these, the quantity times the unit price gives you the total for that item, the sum of all the items on the project. That becomes, and it's estimated, though it's not, it's not explicitly listed that way, it's the estimated contract amount. So that's what your contract is awarded based on, but it's not a firm payment price. So I, I tried to put together just a very simple example of, of how this would work. So if the owner of the city homeowner, whoever it might be, wants, you know, 50 feet of four-foot wide contract to get concrete sidewalk to get from their front steps to an existing sidewalk in their front yard, you know, they would say, okay, you're going, mobilization, that's to get you and your crews out there, store the materials, maintain the site, excavate the material to make way for the concrete, aggregate base to support the concrete, the sidewalk itself, and then the seed to restore any of the disturbed turf in the area. So that would be your project. So the city would provide the bid items, the units, the estimated quantities, and then the contractor would insert the prices here and then it's just math from there to get to the total of, in this case, it would be $3,870. So that would be the estimated contract price based for the award. So if the project's completed and maybe the final quantities came in something different, now they got the materials and the labor out there, they completed the work, so they get full payment for the mobilization. The excavation, maybe they didn't have to haul it offsite because the owner said, you can just go fill that low area over there, so they didn't have the expense of the trucking or anything else. So that quantities get zero. They didn't do the work, they don't get paid for it. Nothing paid on there. The aggregate base, they used a little bit less than we estimated, so there's a little bit of a savings there by one unit. The sidewalk came out as we measured it, as expected, and maybe the seed, their equipment tore up a little bit more of the grass, we had to use a little bit more seed. So that one we pay above. So we got our sidewalk exactly like we wanted, but the total price is actually a little less than the contract amount. So those don't have to be the same. In fact, they are almost never the same. So just want to-
Is there ever a situation where the unit price then can deviate or?
The unit prices are locked in short of a change order.
Okay. So if there was a significant number, they may issue a change order or they may request a change order?
Significant quantity change?
Well, yeah, I mean, like, I mean, there's efficiencies there in the unit prices, right?
Yes.
So if they planned on six and it ended up being 12 or?
There could be, and I have a note on that at a future slide. So I, I will go through that because that is an important point. Or that's it for the con, does that make sense on the contracting and the payments? Okay. So then, oh, sorry. Um, the change order itself, so a change order is needed to introduce a formal change to the contract terms. So again, if there's, uh, you know, variations in the quantities, you know, we needed an extra 10 feet of sidewalk or something, um, usually it's just paid. There's not a change order for changing because it's the work types in there, the estimated quantities in there. Again, to the mayor's point, unless it's a significant change that warrants a change of scope or a change of contract, if it's, if it's a reasonable number, that doesn't have to change. Um, you pointed out the exception right here, Mayor. Um, there is some provisions and min nuts. I think it's 20, I didn't have time to verify it, it might actually be 25, but if there is a, a bigger deviation on it, the contractor has the right to renegotiate a contract price. You can always renegotiate the contract price, even if it's less than that, if both parties agree, but there, there is a, some protection on the contractors and for that. So in some circumstances, the unit price could be adjusted. For example, we, if we said to dig out this large pond and then we got there and we determined we only need half of this, they might have worked some of their other costs into that excavated volume and now they would want a higher price for a smaller quantity. So we would, we would change the unit price, again, that would have to be per change order, not, not through, yeah, have to be through change order because it'd be a change in the terms for that unit price. And then just to note that change orders can increase or decrease the contract amount or the expected payment amount, however that's viewed, um, or have no change. An example of that would be changing the completion date, for example, uh, which we had recently on the, on the wellhouse five. We will note, and I'm sure council will, will recognize this, that we generally only see the increases in the contractor. And, and the reason for this is actually quite simple. So if there's scope added, that means we don't have the scope in the contract, we have to introduce that to the contract. If scope is taken out, we just simply don't pay for it. If we just say, we're going to forego the turd curb and not, not pay you for it, even if we have bid items, estimated quantities and a price associated, if we don't want the work done and the contractor doesn't require or request a change in it, we can simply just not pay him for that item. So we don't bring those change orders to you. We could, but it's just more processing and unneeded expense and coordination in my mind. Um, you will notice with the interchange, uh, min dot brings all of those forward and that's why you have 40 some change orders on that project, whatever it is.
36.
There's a lot. Um, so I run through the, the different causes or, or things that can trigger change orders. Um, you know, generally they fall into these three categories, I think, probably always. Um, unforeseen conditions, and that's probably the most common. Um, owner-directed changes, and I'll go through each of these with a little more description, or, uh, planned errors or omissions. So those would be the reasons for them in, in almost every situation. So unforeseen conditions, it's something that was unknown prior to the bidding. So during the designs phase, something that wasn't known, wasn't included in the project, it was discovered while the work was, was taking place, could be before the work was taking place, but post-pit anyway, so it's not accounted for in the contract. So example, back to our sidewalk, um, project, if the, the contractor was excavating to build the sidewalk and found a stump that was cut off just below turf level and not excavated, but now in the way of the sidewalk, that would need to get removed. So you'd have two options and this is a common occurrence, um, on the work sites. You can stop work, in which case you usually get about a $1,200 to $1,500 or more per hour charge from the contractor for their guys to sit there and wait for you to make a decision. So most of the time, we authorize and say, okay, time and material, get this work done, we're going to log everything and then we'll negotiate a contract or a, a payment after the fact. So that's almost always the way we end up going on it because it almost always is the cheaper route to go. So in a case like this, the contractor would request, may request, you know, $160 saying it's going to take me three hours of shoveling and $25 to get rid of the stump down at the compost. So that would be added via change order to the contract because that's new work, new payment. And something to note that had that stump been known about, the contract would have had a bid item for a removed stump, the contractor probably would have put in a price somewhere around $160 and it would have just got paid. Second one is an owner-directed change. Um, and we do have this time to time, we've had this, um, I think on both wellhouses, I think we realized when the work was getting done that we wanted more pavement for, for maneuvering trucks. So that, that's a good example, but just to stick with the sidewalk, um, example on here. If the owner determined, um, say, oh, it'd be really nice to have, be able to walk from my sidewalk to my mailbox, so you, I want some pavers to go to and around my mailbox. So you ask the contractor for a price on that, he comes back and says, I'll charge you, you know, $15 a foot, it's 25 feet, $375. Again, it's new material, new work, that's added to the contract via a change order for $375. Again, had the owner already known he wanted these pavers, he would have put those in the original bid, would have put 15 or 25 square feet of it, probably the contractor would have put a price of about $15 in there and you'd be paying that anyway. So these really aren't additional costs, if you will, as much as unanticipated costs. Are these making sense? Okay. Um, and then the third one, and this, this one gets the most complicated, so the, the, and these are more gray, are a little bit harder to deal with often. So planned errors and omission, these are just mistakes or, um, you know, just oversights when putting the scope together. It can, could be for any reason. Um, either it's a technical error or it's, you know, input from, you know, staff or residents of, you know, what's out there. It could be anything. of, you know, what's out there, it could be anything. That's just prevents whatever it is from being included in the project or being included incorrectly in the project. So an example, again, back to the sidewalk, if the resident wanted turf seed, or, I'm sorry, wanted native seed mix, they wanted Black Eyed Susans and native plantings in their yard, not a lawn turf mix. But they didn't tell anybody that, they just said, put seeding in. So it got specified as a turf mix because that's cheaper and more common. So that was bid at, say, $25, but what they actually wanted was the native seed, which is more expensive. So they asked the contractor, and the contractor says, well, that's $40. So again, new work, you don't have an item for that, so you have to introduce this by change order for the work. So there, there's two ways this plays out in projects, one's much easier than the other one. The first one is if this discrepancy is identified right away. For example, if they haven't even started the project, they bid it, but they haven't started the project, landscaper hasn't been out there, so nothing has happened, maybe the owner goes through the documents and says, no, I want native seed, this has to be corrected. That's very simple. Now they just change it to native seeding. So you introduce the $40 per pound for the native seeding, and you don't pay the 25. So you really only, your only additional cost is that additional cost for the seed. And once again, if that had been known at the time of bidding, you would have put native seed in there, you would have had $40 for it, so not any additional cost of what you would have had. So item two, this is where things get, can get ugly. So if the work has started or been completed, now these start becoming lost costs, these are extra costs to the project. For example, if the landscaper gets out there, brings the seed mix and doesn't bring the other one, so he's got, he's got turf seed mix there, and the owner says, that's not what I want, I want, I want the, the native seed, he doesn't have it on site, so there's a cost for him to go get it. So you're in for some cost now, for him to go get the right stuff, and you're still paying him the $40. So you are paying more on the contract. If it's even worse, he comes back and he throws it down and it starts growing, and you realize, that's not native seed, and you want him to redo it, now you're paying for him to redo the work. So that's where it gets very expensive. Luckily, I can only think of one of these examples since I started here in 2015. It was on the interchange, and it wasn't very big, but there, there was one that, that did happen on that, that it's pretty uncommon. That's why we have people on the site, to catch these early, so we can do this before they become problems. So very uncommon, but those can be the big ones. So yeah, just, I noted, generally, the earlier these are caught, the better and the less expensive it is. So this is literally just a summary of the three, but I just, I just want to point out on these that the different, the different causes, if you will, on these, the, the price you would have paid had they been known earlier is the same as if you figure it out later. Now, there, there could be some variation in there, the contractor might charge a little bit more because he's notified late. So it might not be exactly the same, but if we get a change order for an unforeseen condition of $100,000 even on a project, had we known about that issue ahead of time, you would have paid that $100,000. It just would have been in the original bid, so-
You don't think the fact that he's bidding that first would have something like that? Now that he's, he's got to compete initially.
Yeah.
And when it's a change order, there's no competition. It's just-
No, does he inflate his price?
Yeah.
Is it? That can happen, and we do a lot of arguing over that. And, and we do. I would say almost no change orders come to you as proposed by the contractor.
You guys kind of-
Yeah. And they can take months. They, they, they can take the life of the project for that matter, there's some we don't settle up until the end. But, and that's why I say it might not be exactly the same, for that exact reason, because, you're right. That can happen. Usually after enough discussions with, most contractors are pretty fair, and they'll, they'll get in there. Maybe there's a 10% inflate, yeah.
Yeah.
Something on there. Some of them try to be more unfair, but we can usually turn that around pretty well. So yeah, and I guess to that point, I mean, I just made the note there that we get a lot more requests than what come to you. I put one in 10 in here as a guess, it, it varies a lot. I know some contractors are very fair, and, you know, we might, if they bring a con, a request to us, we might bring that to you because it's reasonable. Other ones, we might bring one in 30. We get a lot of these requests for, for things.
I don't think, I knew that.
Yeah, there's, there's a, we, you see almost none of them. Only the ones that we feel are justified, that they have reason for, for bringing those through and then haven't been able to negotiate through them.
So this is basically a change order 101 and not the prelude to the bomb dropping on us?
No, I don't have any of that, so.
I don't have a bomb, so you're good.
Actually, we, don't say that, we have none on the docket right now, but now I'll probably have five of them next meeting, I thought you said that.
February March are busy.
No, the next item has nothing to do with change orders, so yeah, this is just information only.
So it gets a little fuzzy for me, I think, you know, it's clear to everybody, we don't enjoy change orders very much. But your example around, around the stump, you know, is, is a pretty good one, it's pretty clear, right? You don't, you don't tell everybody to go home and come back after the council meeting in two weeks. You know, it's, it's obvious what needs to be done, and it's just a matter of getting it done and moving on. So those change orders still end up coming to us for approval, but the work is done.
Yes.
And it should have been done.
Yes.
But in my head, it's like, well, what are we approving then?
So, and you're, coming from the line of work you're in, you probably know that we use change order incorrectly in those situations, that's actually a forced account. So it is a different, the process is exactly the same, and all municipalities, as far as I know, do this. MINDOT will do it as a forced account. It gets processed at the city as a change order, but yes, it is different. You're giving the work directive before getting owner approval, and that is what we're doing with those change orders. We're doing that for that exact reason. If we were to say, hang tight, we're going to go get approval, you can start back up in a week and a half, right? You're going to see a huge bill. I mean, it's very expensive to have all that equipment and people sitting around, so I don't, I don't know if that answered your question or not, but-
Yeah, well, it's, I mean-
It's in, it, it's in attempt to control costs.
Knowledge is this situation, and clearly there are, like the example you used, I mean, there's no good reason to wait on, on doing that work, you're in the middle of something, people are there to do it, and, and you want to keep moving, because standing still has a cost to it. I just, the part that, again, is, is not clear to me is then why are we even approving it? I mean, it's work necessitated by the project, you know, it's going to get pulled from some contingency-
Yeah.
-until that's gone, but then, then we should talk about it.
Yeah.
Things that keep you moving, I mean, is there, you know, is there a dollar amount? Is there, you know, is there something where we just don't, we understand that the work has to happen and we don't need to talk about it again?
Right. No, that, that's a, a good question. The, the contract is between the city and the contractor, and the city being council, the, the decision-making body, has to approve the change to the contract. So it's still a change to the contract even if they did the work. They're basically doing the work with the understanding that the contract will be changed and they will get paid. So you are approving the contract to be amended to bring that new work item in. That's, that's actually not done while they're doing the work. They're basically doing it, I don't know if I'm explaining this real well, you mean, contract-
I think it's more of a formality, I think that's, honestly, the answer is probably, it's just, it's more of a formality.
Yeah, I mean, the work's done. I mean, if you were to deny it, they will be able to fight it and get paid. I mean, I, I think that's safe to say, but, but yeah, just because you are the owner and you're the, you're the party to the agreement, that it takes your formal approval to make the formal change on the contract. Is that-
Maybe it could just be framed up differently when it comes to us to say, this is, you know, this had to happen, we did it, and here's the impact.
Should probably make a, yeah, I should probably make a better point of saying, this work was-
Paperwork cleanup or something.
This work was completed and due to urgency or whatever. But yeah, yeah, we can try to voice that better when they are brought before you on, on the reasons for it. But again, I, this, this last line, I just want to remind, because I, I mean, this is just something I came up with, but, you know, the, the change order, there are exceptions to this, but it's, it's generally not an extra cost as much as it is an unanticipated cost, because again, had you known the things prior to it, you would have been paying them anyway, so. Still not great, because nobody likes unexpected costs either, but it, it's better than an extra cost in my mind, so. These are met, there's a ton of numbers, I apologize. I just wanted to show, oops. I just wanted to show, these are some of the past projects, that these are all far enough through that I was comfortable putting numbers up, you know, we have a lot of them in process here. And just, just to show how, how these can change, so these are the different projects, the approximate years at least of the, the construction, and I, I think these should be fairly accurate numbers. You know, some of the older ones were a little bit, we had to do a little bit of, of piecing together on them, but, so under the, so the construction part is just the, the contract amount, or the bid amount. So that was the, the bid amount versus the actual construction cost. So as I said, they, they never are the same. And they are sometimes over. Sometimes it costs more to bid it than we estimate, but often it's less than we estimate as well. So in this case, just to note, the ones with parentheses, parentheses are unused budget. So, you know, Pine View, probably they'll pick it because it was the biggest one. You know, they, they bid 3.9 million, we paid them 3.8. So it's almost $100,000 less than what we anticipated on it, so. And I didn't, not intended for anything other than to show, you know, when they don't do the work, they don't get paid. So even on the change orders, I mean, some of the change orders that we approve ahead of time, we, they're still estimated quantities often, so we might still pay less with that even. And then I did include engineering because I just had it in the same spreadsheet. So the, the authorized budget is what we came and requested from council, and then the actual engineering cost is what we actually spent on the project, and as you can see, we are consistently under on it. I try to be reasonable, I, I see, I, I think we need a lot more than we do sometimes, but I don't like asking for change orders, so. I don't know, just, just to give you a sense, I, again, nothing specific to take out of here, I just wanted to let you know where you're sitting on things. I mean, generally speaking, we're coming in, you know, better than anticipated in my mind, so. And that was it, so hopefully that at least helps some. If you have any questions, let me know. If you have any questions tomorrow or next week, let me know. Can run through any of this.
Okay. On the H?
No. This, this one is for stormwater funding, so the action on here is actually quite small, it'll flesh out with this, but I did want to give you guys a heads up of some of the stuff going on here with some stormwater projects, just so you're aware of them. So I'll try to run through this quickly. Elm Creek Watershed, that's, and that's actually, you know, just for information, that's what's on the right here. So all of, this area is the Elm Creek Watershed boundary. So as you can see, Dayton is 100% within Elm Creek Watershed District, as well as all of Corcoran, all of Rogers, a good portion of Maple Grove, and then pieces of the other communities, as you can see. So they manage this area from a stormwater standpoint. So the watershed got funding through Bowser, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, through a program called the Watershed-Based Implementation Funding. So they secured some money to do projects within the watershed. We had requested money to do some of the projects that were identified within the city previously, and I'll show that on the next slide, and these projects all got approved. So we got some money to do these projects. So tonight's action is actually just to formally accept the ability to use the money for the projects. So it's not committing to anything, it's just to enter the agreement, but I'll get to that at the end. So the project selection, council may remember, we did a subwatershed assessment, so the area highlighted here, which is a subset within Dayton and actually part of it into Rogers, associated with Diamond Creek, which also includes Diamond Lake and French Lake as well. So it's the, I'll say the, the colored, colored shaded area. I tried to highlight the city boundary in there just to give you a, a reference of where this, this covers. So that study really looked at, you know, what improvements could be done to different areas within there to improve overall water quality in the system and downstream of the system. And the real intent of it was not only to see what can be done, but also to use it as a tool for securing funding, which is exactly what we did here. So when they had the opportunity for this funding, we picked a few of the, the, what was identified out of here and said, yeah, we've been looking to do these, they're on our CIP, we want to do them, and they, they entered them in and we got the funding for it. So project one is a feasibility study, so it's just looking at what could be done for the water, so stormwater during rain events that falls within the Mobile Home Park community, and that all flows to the east under West French Lake Road to French Lake. So this is a study to see, you know, how can that water be improved, because there's no treatment to it prior to its discharge into French Lake. This will be 100% grant funding eligible, so no cost to the city for this. This is just an aerial of the look of, of the project. So the study will essentially be, you know, along this path, you know, what could be done to improve water quality, probably it falls somewhere in this area. But we'll look at that with the study.
I thought, didn't, so when they removed their treatment facility, I thought something along this lines, these lines was done then.
There was, so there's sewer treatment, there are lagoons were actually up here where Invent is.
Yep.
But, and I've, I've, I haven't been able to confirm this, other than residents have been here longer than I have, is this pond was dug at one time.
That was the original treatment pond.
That's what I've heard from other residents that have been here longer than me.
In Greensville.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, that's, same I heard, so that confirms it, I think.
Things were a little looser then.
Yeah. So maybe helping water quality now, certainly then, much more needed if you're running that type of water through there, but, yeah, so the, the, the study will be to look at that project. Project two is actually a construction project, and this is for the neighborhood immediately north of Diamond Lake. The roads take some water through there, there is minimal treatment, there is some treatment in the neighborhood, but there's also a couple drains that go directly into the lake with no, with nothing prior to its discharge. This project was looked at, I don't know, maybe 2017 that was part of it, it never really went anywhere because we didn't find any money for it, but it's being looked at again, so just a quick, and I'll go to the-
This is just stormwater, right?
This is just stormwater, stormwater only, yeah. So these are the two discharge points, there's just, okay, got that in the right spot. There is a third, I don't know, yeah, there is a third one down there, we don't have space for it though, for sure. So we're going to get the two, we can, easy.
What would a treatment look like? I mean, what would-
So, so the, what we're expecting is Saffel baffles, which Saffel just stands for St. Anthony Falls Laboratory, just because they, they built it. It, it's just a mechanical mean, so it's just, it's a structure with some weirs in it that just, it, it helps settle out the sands and salts.
Supposed to catch-
Yeah, so it's just so you don't have the delta buildup where the water goes down into the lake, it just captures it in there and then Marty's crews can-
And they pump it out periodically?
-vacate all it and get rid of it, just to help with the long-term maintenance and let less of that salt from entering the lake. So it's, it's just a way to trap some of that. So they're just mechanical structures, we're estimated, preliminary estimate is 70,000 for the project, the grant will cover, can't do my math, 75% of it, I think, whatever 58 is.
58 of them.
Man, their finance guy can do it. So they'll cover that, so the city would be on the hook for the remaining 12. One thing I've learned since even doing this presentation, we might actually even be able to split that with the watersheds, we might be able to get that down to six. I'm not positive yet, but we might be able to whittle that down even further. And then the third one is to study Grass Lake, that's the one that, actually, it's on both sides of South Diamond, so when you drive in from Rogers, you'll just see tides and open water on both sides. 64% of the water that goes into Diamond Lake comes from Grass Lake, and as of today, there's not a great understanding of the pollutants or what's going on within that lake. So this has been identified for quite some time and very much highlighted in the subwatershed assessment, to get a better handle of what, what the pollutants are in there and what's going on in there. So this study will look at the internal loading and the different components of the lake.
Why, why am I thinking that would actually help Diamond Lake with, with Grass Lake draining into it? I mean, I got to believe that's fairly well buffered.
It's probably not terrible. It does take this whole area of Rogers. So the good part, that, that part of Rogers was built, what we say, after rules, so rules got more stringent in like the mid-eighties. Simple way of saying that is, most of those guys have ponds. Most of those sites are treating water, so we don't necessarily expect Grass Lake to be extremely polluted or anything, but it does help with management of Diamond Lake and then downstream, just knowing what we're dealing with. And if there is anything we can do in there, some kind of a chemical treatment, or a drawdown, or any other, anything else we could introduce to help that, that would just trickle down, if you will. So, the thought is to do the study there. Again, these studies, because they align with the initiatives of the watershed and their goals, that's why they're being covered a hundred percent. So, a hundred percent cost per the grant with no cost to the city. The only downside is, is that it's recommended that there's two to three years of monitoring data on Grass Lake to help inform this, and you cannot use grant dollars for monitoring. We expect that to be about ten thousand dollars. We've been trying to connect with Three Rivers Park District, because they do very much the same things. We're trying to team with them. They're already doing some monitoring downstream, we're gonna see if they can monitor upstream for us, and we can have some of a cost share.
I thought the city of Dayton did have monitor, a monitor on Grass Lake.
They did have...
About ten years ago.
It was even more, a little more recent than that. I wanna say there was about eighteen months of data. They do have some. And we did have some initial talks before we actually got this money, with Three Rivers, maybe six months ago, about this, that we wanna do this. And he said that they would be interested in it as well, because again, this all goes in through their park and, and whatnot. So, we do have a little bit, but to form a good management plan, our stormwater team is thinking additional monitoring would be of value for that, so. Again, you know, there might be a cost responsibility of about ten thousand to the city, we're gonna look at trying to whittle that down to, and maybe it's less than that, that was just our initial stab at, you know, somebody going out there for two to three years, so.
Was there any discussion about drawing down Diamond Lake?
So, we have, yeah, and I, I don't have anything put into this presentation on it. We've also put that on the CIP at the watershed, just to get a placeholder for it. To be honest, we need to do some more conversations on that, because we, we could probably use that money as early as this year, I think we even have it on for this year. Maybe it's next year.
We do, this year.
Is it this, yeah. We, which, it's a, that's a significant cost, a significant project. And to be honest, we haven't, I don't know if we've a hundred percent flushed out, if now is the right time to do that, or if we wanna do that, because we've also looked at some alum treatments, and we have that in there as well. And I don't think we wanna do both at the same time. But we wanted them in there as a placeholder, so the watershed could, could work with that information in their CIP, and in their funding for upcoming years. And then, the good thing about the watershed is when you get projects in there, they're very easy to slide around and delay and, and whatnot, but it's good to have them in there for planning purposes. So we did put them in, admittedly, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure if now's the time or not, but we're...
Was there a discussion of dredging also?
Not, not from our standpoint, but that's definitely a possibility.
If there is, ask, is, because a resident called me from the Diamond Lake Association, saying that they had gotten some very specific people from, or some specific information about costs and timelines from somebody at the city, and I can't seem to figure out who that was.
Oh.
And, and I'd never heard it either.
For dredging, or for the drawdown?
Drawdown, dredging.
So the, the drawdown makes sense, because that would be on the information from the watershed. Because we did put the information on there, so that's, yeah, it's a, it's not, it's not...
I mean, I, I, not that, I don't think it's a good idea. I suspect it is a good idea. There's still a lot of rough fish in there, so it'd be nice to...
Yeah, I, we think it'd be a beneficial project, it's, it's just, there's, there's a lot of stuff to juggle, and, again, I, I don't think we're a hundred percent locked in on that yet. Hope to get there soon. But yeah, we'll, we'll keep looking at it. This is, again, this is just a schematic, just to kinda show, you know, here's Grass Lake. There's a few inlets from the, I guess, industrial park, or industrial area of Rogers that comes in, and then here's where it comes into Diamond Lake, and then, just to show how these tie together and continue east into Elm Creek Park. So really, the only action tonight is to approve the cooperative, make out the cooperative and subgrant agreement. So that's, just saying, the city is willing to accept the grant funding for these projects. So, again, not committing to the projects or any other further costs, that's the only action tonight. From there, we'll determine, you know, what's needed for the Grass Lake monitoring, we'll work with Three Rivers Park District to, to keep working on that. And then we just ask that there be consideration for these identified projects, and then point out my, yet again, I had another staff report error, I apologize for that. I was not able to get confirmation on the studies. I was of the impression that the watershed would complete the studies. Apparently, they will not complete them, the city still completes them, the funding's the same. The, but the cities, the city is the one to coordinate and complete the studies using grant money. I, I thought the watershed was gonna do those for us, but they're not, so. So there will be three proposals coming to you in the future. I don't know when those will be, this funding is available until 2027. I expect, you know, other than the Grass Lake, the other two could be done this year, I don't know if there's reason to wait on that. The Grass Lake with the monitoring, that would probably be 2026 or even 2027, so those will be in the future, a little bit further out, but...
Yeah, there's money in the long-term plan to be able to do those projects, so just so everyone's aware it's not unbudgeted dollars.
So that's all I had, yeah, so there is an action on this, but it's, again, it's, it's not committing any money or...
Great. Need a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any more discussion?
So I had one, one piece that popped up at, at me in looking at the agreement, was under number six limit on reimbursements. And it seems like for the construction pieces on this, any, any overruns are really on us, that we don't go back to the watershed district for, for anything, like they found mud, or they expected something else, or the usual things, I guess. So am I reading that correctly? I guess, my question.
Oh, it, it could be, I didn't go through it close enough to, to catch all of that. That, that doesn't surprise me, because they do have a hard fix on the dollars that were allotted for the different projects under the grant, and I'm sure the watershed doesn't have it in their abhorrent tax to cover any additional spending this year, so. That would make sense. Now, another option, if we dug into this and said, "This project's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars," we would just cut the scope. We'd just build one of the two, I would think. I mean, unless the city wanted to put the extra money in, but we do have other ways of controlling the cost. The, the scope itself on these is actually pretty flexible, which is great. So, basically, the only commitment we have to make is that they will benefit the water quality in these areas. Not necessarily that we have to build two of the structures or any certain type or anything, so that's something we can certainly keep an eye on, if we think this is trending high. I mean, we'd certainly come to council for either approval to go higher, or approval to pull the scope back, to match the funding.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
You answered my other question, I couldn't figure out what a saffle baffle was.
St. Anthony Falls Laboratory, yeah, they got credit for coming up with that one.
Any other questions? All right, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. And if there are no objections, we will be adjourned. We're adjourned.